Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Sodik City Council meeting for March 22, 2021. Clerk, please take the roll.
Dean?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Pardon me, Stanton?
Here.
Truster is absent with prior notice and Becken?
Here. I did receive a phone call this afternoon from Councilman Truster. He's moving about the state of Florida and didn't think he would be able to participate in the evening, or in the meeting this evening, so he's excused with prior absence. Moving on to agenda item number three, approval of the minutes. I have a motion to approve the city council minutes of meeting on March 8, 2021, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Peterson, seconded by Dean to pre- to approve the minutes as presented. Any comments or corrections from council? If done, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. There are no mayor's comments this evening. Moving on to city manager's comments. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello, council. My first report is that Councilman Dean was kind enough to take me on a stand-up paddleboard tour on Sunday. Had I had my cellphone on me, I think I would have been calling the Allegan County Marine Patrol for a pickup somewhere along the Kalamazoo River, but it was a good time. Other than that, the, uh, the, uh, the manager's report was reviewed at your workshop on Thursday. One update that I do have is that the governor's order is going to be lifted on April 1st, the emergency orders for in-person meetings, which would require us to meet in person. So I, um, I'll work with the mayor to schedule a special meeting next week to declare your emergency order to allow you to continue with Zoom meetings until we get our hybrid system really dialed in and make sure that's fully capable. So happy to answer any questions outside of that. And thanks for that tour, Councilman Dean.
Hey, council, any questions for city manager? If none, moving forward, any agenda changes by city manager or by council?
None, Mr. Mayor.
If none, our agenda will stand as presented. Moving on to guest speakers this evening, first down the docket, Lieutenant Brett Enfield from Allegan County Sheriff's Department. Brett, are you ready to join us?
Yep. How you guys doing?
Good, good. Thank you.
Um, not much. It just, uh, everything started picking up just a little bit with the warmer weather. Um, Deputy Flockster is actually field training one of our new deputies. Uh, we actually have, at the end of the month, we'll have five, uh, people in, um, training for the sheriff's office, which is, uh, we're starting a time of, uh, you know, turnover in the next three or four years. I think there are going to be 16 people retiring. So, uh, that's kind of started that, uh, trend, um, in case you see Rob with somebody, uh, he's going to be, uh, um, training somebody. We may, um, have him switch with one of our section deputies if it becomes busy out in the county, um, just to, um, get him some, the new guy some experience, but we wanted to have him, um, be familiar with Sawgatuck and get, uh, some of the community policing aspects also. Um, but, uh, if we do switch him, we'll switch him with a deputy that's, uh, worked out in your guys' area and stuff before, so there won't be any, uh, interruption of service or anything like that. So at that point, that's about, uh, all I have for, uh, tonight I can think of. Um, Chris, if he has any questions or anything, I'll be, uh, happy to answer those.
Hey, could I see Holly? Wanted to be recognized?
Hi, Lieutenant Brett. Um, I noticed that there were four domestic assault calls in, in 10 days. That seemed like a lot.
Um, yeah, I mean, it just, uh, it kind of goes, uh, in spurts with those and so forth. But, uh, yeah, that our domestic violence is complaints, uh, have been, uh, on the upward swing over the last, uh, year or so, so. A lot of those complaints that you see are civil, may actually be, uh, you know, like, uh, not to the category of a domestic violence, but they may be, um, uh, you know, individuals fighting or something like that that sometimes categorized as a civil matter. Um, or it could be just somebody that's, uh, also, you know, fighting over property or so forth. So it's kind of a, the civil is kind of a broad, um, thing, but, uh, usually with those domestic violence, uh, there was, you know, some reported, uh, form of a possible assault or, uh, something for it to get categorized that way.
Okay, um, is there, is there something that, is there like a trigger? If there's a certain number, or is there some sort of outreach? Or I'm just wondering how is, is this, I know it's been going up nationally, but if this is an issue that were happening locally, I'm just sort of wondering how we approach it or if it's something we need to keep an eye on.
Um, you know, that's a good question. I think if you could find the answer for that, uh, I think it's a lot of different things. Um, you know, it, uh, people being cooped up together at times, you know, um, you know, just, uh, you know, some uneasy times and so forth, uh, you know, it just, uh, yeah, I don't a hundred percent know the, uh, the preventative of things, uh, on the preventative side. I know, uh, there are programs and stuff, but I just, uh, I would suggest that, you know, just keep talking to people and, uh, you know, if there's issues and stuff to, you know, tell people that there's a way out and stuff that they don't have to subject themselves. I mean, that's one of the issues is that, uh, you know, we find that, you know, people stay, stay with the relationship way too long and, you know, there's, uh, situations where it, it usually escalates at times if there is any type of violence that way, so.
Counsel. All right. Thank you.
Hey.
Mayor.
Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Lieutenant Enfield, um, I noticed, uh, one of your officers, uh, on the street, uh, doing the, you know, foot patrol, uh, last week. I thought that was great to see him out of the car and interacting with folks on Butler Street. Uh, so, so thank you for that. And just any reports of any issues over St. Patrick's Day. Um, I was downtown and he seemed very quiet, very calm, very peaceful. Would, would welcome your, uh, your thoughts on how the week went.
Um, yeah, we, uh, we actually on Friday and Saturday, I, uh, scheduled, uh, two reserve officers to, um, work down there. Um, most of the full-time officers now are vaccinated. Um, so, you know, we're able to, you know, start to get out a little bit more and stuff, uh, feel a little bit more, um, comfortable interacting with, uh, you know, the public. Um, yeah, I, I think that there hasn't been any issues, uh, so far. Uh, just a couple, you know, minor, minor things. I think, uh, you know, the sense the alcohol is a little bit more, uh, you know, uh, subject of awareness and stuff, uh, we're receiving some complaints of, you know, the, those type of things a little bit, but nothing, uh, no major, uh, issues at all.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
I have a follow-up to, uh, Councilmember, uh, Leo. Uh, Lieutenant call made several times. Does it trigger anything like with the crisis center?
Uh, you, I missed the first part of what you said.
If any of these calls are to the same place several times, does that trigger to a crisis center sometime? For the domestic violence?
You know, really, we, there's not, not a, uh, function of that. We, we suggest strongly to individuals, we go back, uh, to a residence. Um, if there's an assault, obviously, we make an arrest. That means a shell, uh, Michigan's a shell arrest state. So if there's any assault, we, you know, we will arrest, uh, the individual. Um, with that, there's usually sanctions of, you know, returning back to the residence and so forth. And, you know, we do provide, uh, information on, uh, you know, how to seek protection orders and, um, uh, those type of aspects. Uh, if there's not an assault, you know, we obviously, you know, suggest that, uh, they seek out, uh, help and stuff for, um, you know, like Sylvia's place and so forth that, uh, you know, do offer those type of counseling and so forth, so.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the lieutenant? If none, Brett, thanks again for, uh, showing up. We appreciate, uh, your comments.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Uh, you guys have a good, uh, next couple of days. It's supposed to be nice and warm, so.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next guest speaker, Dan Fox with a report from Sodik Township Fire Board. Dan?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, Township Fire Board, Sodik Township Fire District Administrative Board met on the 15th of March, our regular meeting. And in order, what we covered, we approved payments in the amount of $92,725. We reviewed the district's year-to-date financial report with revenue standing at 94% of budget and expenditures at 74% of budget, and both are, both those numbers are tracking as expected. Thank you, Peter. Uh, major equipment and apparatus notes, uh, there's an unanticipated estimated $17,000 expense coming up to repair, replace a pump shaft and housing on the, uh, aerial platform, the large 2151 truck. On the other side of things, uh, the district received $5,000 from the sale of the 1990 rescue boat to Preska Isle Fire Department. Uh, we reviewed a grant application for vehicle stabili- stabilization struts. I didn't know what they were either. They're used to when a car's on its side or whatever. They're used, they're planted, you kind of jam it into the ground and it and hydraulically supports the car so it doesn't end up getting worse and worse shaped than it was. We discussed the status of the subcommittee's ongoing work regarding, uh, human resources budgeting for the district, which continues in the information gathering stages. Briefly discussed a pending subpoena concerning a lawsuit filed against Sodik Township related to the denial of a building permit, substantial, uh, amount of documents and district, fire district time involved in getting them together. We received a presentation to try community recycling committee chair, thank you, Garnet, concerning a planned or the planned household hazardous waste collection event scheduled tentatively for May. We, the board unanimously approved a $1,000 donation from the fire district for the stipulation that an intergovernment, inter-local government agreement be in place for the event if the fire station is to be the collection site. Uh, subsequently, that committee, as I understand it, has chosen to hold the event at the Sawgatuck, City of Sawgatuck DPW site, as was first suggested during the fire board meetings. So all's well there. A chief janic noted the fire district had sent, uh, thank you letters to the following for their assistance at the recent COVID-19 immunization clinic at Sawgatuck High School. Uh, those thank yous went to the public schools, to Sawgatuck Golf Carts for providing quick transportation over long distances there. Back alley pizza for lunch, MDOT and Grashap Fire Department for, um, the message boards that directed people where to go. We reviewed and discussed the challenges that the Interstate 196 construction work, which is to my eyes already beginning, will pose for the fire department's operations. Two key pro- or three key problems, actually, it's, uh, district is likely unable to rely on 196 as an alternate right, uh, alternate right to, per, to eastern portions of the township to, and southern portions of the township, south of Douglas, and even potentially to Douglas itself. It also poses the likelihood of congestion, added traffic congestion on Blue Star Highway through Sawgatuck and Douglas all during the season, which potentially can slow response rates. Um, and not least of all, there's the potential for increased motor vehicle accidents when people encounter this restricted lane situation on 196. Chief Janic is working with the other area departments, uh, to try and come up with a good plan to offset and, and help one another in, in, in these circumstances. Last item coming up. We watched, as a board, we watched, uh, an under, short underwriters laboratory video comparing the speed fire spreads in today's buildings with their extensive use of synthetic fabrics and furnishings, as well as, uh, plywood involving, uh, manufactured from sawdust and glue and what have you. The net of it was that the time available to exit a housing, uh, burning building furnished largely with synthetic materials is less than three minutes, and I wanted to be sure I was right on that, so I asked the chief and he texted me this. He said, yes, it's less than three minutes until the room and contents become fully involved. This condition is known as flashover. Essentially, the room and contents get so hot that whatever was not burning ignites violently. There's a significant amount of evidence, or significant, significant amount of science now behind structured fires and, uh, underwriters laboratories who produced the video. It's, uh, we're going to have that video on the, uh, on my page, on the, uh, posted on the fire district's website, because it is, it's spooky when you realize how little time and, and before that flashover point, the smoke in the, i- is, is five or six feet below the level of the ceiling in the room, and it's thick black smoke. It's, it's scary stuff and scary for the first responders who have to deal with it directly. Um, but anyway, that's it from, uh, March 15th meeting. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Any questions for commission member Dan Fox? If none, we'll move on. Thanks, Dan, for your report. Next agenda item is, uh, comment from the public. This is where the public has the opportunity to address council on any, uh, agenda item. If you wish to be recognized to address the council, please unmute your mic in the Zoom interface, ask to be recognized, identify yourself by name and the community in which you reside. So the floor is open for a comment from the public. Anyone interested this evening? Here's that. We can move on. Do you see anyone? Aaron?
I have, sir.
Okay, so we'll close the, the public comment portion of the meeting. Uh, next agenda item is request for payments. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the accounts payable, please?
Mayor, this is Garn.
Garnet?
Yep. Motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $46,850.13.
Okay, I don't know who caught that second. Holly or Chris?
Lauren.
Lauren, I'm sorry. Uh, so we have a motion by, uh, Louis, seconded by Stanton to approve the accounts payable as presented. Uh, any, uh, any questions or comments by council?
Real quick, Mayor, I just have a quick question of Ryan, and I don't know if Peter's on. Buoy's in and, and out. Is that something, are we, did we put the buoys back in already? I couldn't tell. You know?
Sorry, Garnet, I do not know, but, uh, I can look into it and get back to you.
I'm just, I don't know if this is something that we do, like, that this is a quarterly payment or, uh, twice a year payment?
Yeah, I, I think I, I kind of have an idea on that a little bit. Uh, the, the, the buoys are put in, uh, through Bolt Lifts Unlimited, there's a, putting them in in the spring, taking them out in the, in the fall. I don't know if this is for the fall pullout and it's just hitting our, our accounts payable or not, but,
Okay.
uh, we do, uh, contract that service out. Uh, I believe Douglas contracts out with the same, the same group, and so the, uh, uh, these are the navigation buoys that would be above the last, uh, Federal Place buoy, which is about at the Casa Loma, uh, general area. Everything upriver from that are responsibility of the, uh, the communities. And, um, I think the no wakes buoys that we see are the white ones. I believe the sheriff's department still installs those or whatever. So, I mean, that's how historically I, you know, we've done it. I assume it's kind of the same, but, uh,
Okay. Just curious.
Anyways, uh, any other comments by council? If done, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Uh, motion passed unanimously. Uh, moving on this evening, we have no introduction of ordinances. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business this evening. Moving on to the action, uh, new business porch, portion of the meeting. Uh, we have special event permits. Mount Ballhead Challenge. Ryan, you want to?
Yeah, I'll be happy to address this and, and utilize Aaron's assistance. So we talked about this at the workshop, a couple of issues that came up with this event, and I know that, saw that Scott Sullivan is on the call as well, so he can help out here. One of the concerns was the use, uh, the full use of the, of the parking lot. Um, you know, staff feels that we could dedicate a portion of, of the parking lot, and, uh, Aaron, do you want me to help me out with this, with this conversation?
Certainly. Uh, I think what you guys discussed in the meeting was potentially giving them the two larger front and back parking lots and then using the smaller lot that's off to the left, um, when we first come in for the public. And I do not have the numbers right-handed to tell you how many spots it is. Um, I do know that it is far below the number of participants they're expecting, so it will likely require, um, some sort of busing or carpooling or something like that for Rotary to consider.
Um, one of the other, go ahead. Uh, any questions on the, the parking lot scene? Or Scott, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like Scott to?
Well, are, are, is this, are we looking for an action on this item tonight, or is this still information only?
I think they're looking for approval to, you know, start planning this event, and the motion that we're recommending is just allow staff to handle the, the execution and the details administratively.
We would welcome certainly a preliminary approval with the understanding that our event is six months out, you know, unlike the events that follow us on the calendar here who are in June, but we're, we're not sure what COVID is going to be. Our optimistic projection is that we will match, um, you know, the numbers in 2019. They could be well in excess. The idea is to market it, to get our brand out, and hopefully to start not only drawing people, but donors. So, you know, Rotary can make money for these charities and this Boys and Girls Club. But yeah, there's, there are, there are variables. Aaron has given me preliminary numbers on the parking lot. It looks like we have, what, maybe 450 people to fight? 450 spots on the north side, or excuse me, yeah. Yeah, that would be on the north side in the smaller lot, which we're looking at keeping open for the public, which I understand. I mean, it's a public park. Um, you know, maybe 80 or so. I'm, I'm not really sure. You know, the challenge I have, and I'll have to go back to my committee, is concern we have medical staff on our committee who are concerned about the proximity of people being shuttled in and out, but we don't know our numbers. I, you know, it, it's a projection. We want to start marketing it, and, you know, my hope is for, you know, a tentative approval, working out the details. I mean, who knows? Maybe shuttles and, and such will be okay by, by September. But, you know, h- h- here's where we at. Here, here, here's where we're at. So, you know, we'd like a thumbs up. We'd like a go-ahead, a tentative approval. But obviously, you, you have to be concerned about your public park and, and so on. You know, we'd also be interested in perhaps keeping at least one lane of, you know, Perryman Street closed off for runners early, because that is early in our projected course, and there will be a glut of people. In past years, we've kept Park Street open for that part, because, but, you know, by the time they've reached Park Street, starting from Wigs Park and going all the way over there, or even Bliss Street and running the, the trails and such, you know, it, it's been a string of people. So, you know, they could negotiate the Narrow Woolam Trail, but, you know, the Narrow Woolam Trail early in the race is going to have crowds. So, you know, it's conjectural, it's sketchy, but, you know, we would welcome a preliminary, you know, approval, and we certainly are more than happy to work with the city and, for that matter, the, the state safety protocols to make sure this good thing happens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Mount Ballhead Challenge and authorize city staff to handle execution and details administratively.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Stanton, seconded by Leo, uh, regarding, uh, motion to approve the special event permit for the Mount Ballhead Challenge. Council comments?
Mayor?
Scott?
Yeah, I, I'm also inclined to support, um, although I think, you know, given that, you know, we're working our way through a pandemic, we need to be flexible. The Rotary certainly seems to indicate they're willing to be flexible and, and work with city staff. I, I would like to see the beach remain accessible to tourists, uh, during the event. Um, I, I would like, uh, the Rotary to explore finding, uh, as many creative ways as possible to help people get in and out of the, uh, venue without having to use cars. I know a lot of people are going to be tired after the race, but if, if, if more shuttle buses can be put on, if we can coordinate with the sheriff to make sure we, we do good traffic control, um, I'd, I'd like to see this event happen. I, I'm, I'm really excited about this event. Uh, we, we need this event, but we need to do it safely, and we need to consider, you know, our other visitors to, to the city and our, and our residents, but, but I'm very much in favor.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Other council comments? The only thing I'd like to add is that, uh, I think we would, uh, I myself and probably council as a whole would appreciate an update as we get closer to the event, uh, just to make sure that, uh, we're all on the same page, so, uh, I think that's, that's pretty much something that understood by staff, but I, I think in this case, council would like a, like an update.
Is also understood by our committee, Mark.
Okay, thanks.
We will.
All right, Scott, thank you. Uh, if there's no further, uh, comments by council, clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes. Motion approved unanimously. I'll move on to the next special event, the town crier race. Uh, again, we had the opportunity to discuss this at our last meeting. Uh, we have a motion regarding this event, or we get into discussion?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Scott.
Scott?
Thanks, Garn.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve the special event application for the town crier race and authorize staff to handle execution and details administratively.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dean, seconded by Louis, to approve the motion regarding special event application for the town crier race. Is there any changes on this, uh, Aaron or, or, uh, Ryan, since, uh, our discussion, the workshop?
Not that I know of yet, um, but they do have a meeting coming up April 21st. They said there might be very, very slight changes to the routes, but I think it will be very insignificant, or very minor, not insignificant, but minor.
All right.
Once we've had that meeting, we'll have a better idea of, you know, what streets need to be closed, what additional police they might need to help direct traffic or any of those sort of details.
Great, great. Well, we want to, we want to work with these folks to move these things, uh, move these things along. I think council create the courtesy of an update as we close up the event, please. Any other comments? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Dean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next special event application, uh, is for the Bike MS event, uh, starting in Holland, meandering through Allegan County back to the Dow Center in Holland. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve this event?
Sir, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Lauren?
And to approve the special event permit for the Bike MS and authorize city staff to handle execution and details administratively.
Beckett? Chris? I heard Chris.
Great, a motion by Stanton seconded by, uh, Peterson to approve the motion as presented. Any further comment by council? Okay, if none, would the clerk please call or roll on the motion?
Stanton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Beckett?
Yes.
And I will, Mr. Mayor, once we have the meetings and nail down a lot of these details, I think a lot of these special events are coming in a little before all the details are ironed out just due to COVID, wanting to see if you guys would generally allow them to go through. But we'll nail down all the details and certainly get you a thorough report before we give them the full thumbs up.
All right, all right, thank you, Aaron and staff. Uh, moving on, uh, next agenda item, removing, removal of the HESCO barriers. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item was discussed here Thursday workshop. Uh, the one piece of information that you all requested was the cost for those barriers because, uh, they have a one-time use. So we provided that cost, uh, came in at $2,261. That doesn't include labor, uh, for installation. You'll see that the motion is to, to remove those barriers. We've already received, uh, multiple requests to do so. Uh, but we just wanted you all to be aware, uh, of the cost in case we have to put something new in place, uh, midsummer or, or later. So, uh, and, and the motion says to remove the HESCO barriers from the Spear Street boat launch, but, um, it actually should be to remove that HESCO barriers from, from all locations.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm moved to approve, uh, the remove all HESCO barriers from the Spear Street boat launch and other locations.
Second.
Okay, motion by Peterson and seconded by Lewis to remove the HESCO barriers, uh, from Spear Street. And I believe the other location is at Butler, I think those are the only two locations we have. Hallelujah. Okay, maybe getting back to normal a little bit. So, uh, any further questions or comments? Your, this is also factoring in the opening of the launch ramp and eventually you'll have some type of a agreement with our, uh, the, you know, the Star Sodic, I think that's going to be managing that for us.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, I did check in with, um, with Sean, Sean Steele, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, he said that's, yeah, they, they had planned on managing the boat launch. And in fact, that's, that's part of their, uh, lease agreement for the street on there, so.
I think that might be a separate agreement, Ryan, so you may want to, you know, revisit that. And if that's something we have to approve at council, I, I think it's probably worth, uh, reviewing and uh, addressing if we need be in the future, near future.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other comments by council?
Yes, Mayor.
Scott?
Um, Ryan, are, are, are we considering, um, purchasing some HESCOs to have on hand in the event we, we have an emergency situation and need to, uh, respond to flooding again? Is that being contemplated?
It isn't at this time. We're, we're happy to listen to council's recommendations on that.
Is the price the same?
I haven't looked into it, Councilman Dean. Um, I would imagine that it's going to be very similar.
Mr. Mayor?
Thoughts on if, if you would like to have these stockpiled in the event of a, of another flooding event?
I, you know, I think Scott Herbert and I talked about this briefly. Um, you know, it was, it was a question of do we have, uh, the, the storage capacity at his DPW shop? Um, and whether or not it was, it was worth the investment. I can't remember what the lead time was on getting those. I know that, um, the story is that they were pretty late coming last, last season when you needed them.
Right.
Um, so I think that we could find a place to, to store them. It really just comes down to whether or not the council, um, you know, wants to pay for that insurance, I'll call it.
Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes, Garn.
Uh, just, just, um, so I think we, we collectively, the city have probably learned, um, from this experience and recognize that, um, the Army Corps of Engineers, their data on the water and water rising and also, um, declining is something that we should, um, follow very closely. So if in the future it looks like our water levels are going to raise to the point where we are going to have flooding or can anticipate flooding, we should, we should then, um, reinvest in a HESCO barrier. Uh, right now we're looking, it's not in the immediate future. And I don't believe that Scott has the room at the, at the garage, um, to house that kind of a barrier. So I think, I think we just keep our eyes on the water levels. And if, if, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers starts giving us the uh, indication that the water levels are going to rise significantly, then we should, uh, discuss and reinvest.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm sure that we'll all be, uh, tentatively watching the water levels and would be able to, to act, uh, appropriately if the, uh, there was a sudden change in the, in the, in the levels. Um, I think that's something that we can continue to, to monitor as Garnett says, uh, any other council comments? Along those, right, it might be nice to know what the availability is too, though, just so you guys, staff at least can be playing ahead. So trust that you'll do that on, on your own. So, uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, would the clerk please call or roll on the motion?
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Beckett?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, agenda, next agenda item is the Tri-Community Household Hazardous Waste Contribution. Uh, Ryan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I feel like I should hand this one over to Mayor Proten.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I won't go through the whole long spiel like I did the other day because everybody has it. And, um, basically, uh, we've gotten, uh, community requests for Household Hazardous Waste Day as a result of not having had one for about 13 years. Um, the Tri-Community Recycling Committee has taken, has taken that request to heart and would like to host a day on the first of May a, at the DPW, thanks to Scott Herbert. Um, so we, when we presented the other day, our request, um, I had a minimal request, if you will, and, um, was basically, uh, it was basically suggested that we keep within the realm of not to exceed $5,000, which, um, would be, would give me and the committee, um, the breathing room we need to make sure that we have the funds both for the Household Hazardous Waste Day and then for the other items that were in that request, the Back to Basics Mailer, the Battery Collection Containers, and then the donation towards, uh, purchase of the reusable bags. Uh, so with that, I'll leave it at that. How's that?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add on to that?
You bet.
Um, in discussion in, in regard to the inter-local agreement or the requirement, uh, for that agreement, um, as was mentioned earlier in the, in the meeting under Dan Fox's report, um, that request came from the, the fire, the fire board. Um, and it was only required if, if, if the event was to be held, um, at the, at the, at the fire department site. Um, so that, that need is, is no longer there. So part of the motion includes, um, just leaving it to staff to handle all the, the administrative work that goes behind making sure insurance is in place and financial contributions are handled appropriately and, and payments to the participating, um, vendor.
Okay, thanks, Ryan, if you have comments. Uh, the chair will entertain, uh, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Ali, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding request in the amount not to exceed $5,000 for Tri-Community Recycling Events and Activities for 2021 as outlined in the report provided by the Tri-Community Recycling Committee, presented by Garnett Lewis. Delegate authority to staff to assist with the administration of Household Hazardous Waste Day, including but not limited to financial contribution and payments to participating entities.
Beckett?
Okay, was that Lauren who seconded that?
Lauren can have it.
Okay, uh, because I just lost my Zoom meeting, so I'm running blind here, folks. So, uh, anyways, uh, any further discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor, I just have to say, uh, big thanks to Garnett for taking this whole thing on. It was a lot of work and thanks to the committee, uh, who, um, worked on all of this. Um, it's a great thing for our community and as Garnett mentioned, it hasn't happened in 13 years. It's needed and I'm looking forward to getting rid of a lot of my hazardous waste.
All right, all right. And I'm sure there's more information to follow for the public, uh, do's and don'ts and what, you know, what steps to take.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to give a follow-up report as we get all the details, uh, ironed out. We still have some things, you know, I'm meeting with the gentleman from Drug and Lab and disposal tomorrow as far as, uh, what the best setup will be at the DPW. So I'll report back.
All right. Okay, thanks Garnett. Any further questions by council? If none, would the clerk please call or roll on the motion?
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson? Peterson? Did she drop out again?
I think so.
We'll come back to that and Beckett.
Uh, yes.
Thanks y'all, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on this evening, uh, is that, uh, Chris that's trying to rejoin us? You know?
She just sent me a message and said she keeps losing her connection. I think she just dropped off.
All right, well, we'll, we'll move on. The next, there is no consent agenda this evening. Next, uh, agenda item is the opportunity for public to address council. Uh, please limit your, uh, comments to three minutes. You can discuss any item that's on your mind. Uh, please identify yourself by name and community of residence. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak this evening?
Dan Fox, sir.
Okay, recognize Dan Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a, a quick one. I was sort of surprised that now that there's been a week or more, a little more, I guess, of the, uh, social district in place, uh, with as much interest as there was in that topic leading up to it, there has been no discussion or no lessons learned or preliminary thoughts about how it's going, or from brother, from anybody, actually. As I say, that just surprised me, but in that spirit, uh, assuming someone's keeping track and looking for lessons learned as in this, uh, pilot program or whatever you call it. Um, I'll give you two. A week ago tonight, which would have been the first 24 hours, I guess, of the social district, a good friend of mine was in Wick's Park, in the park, not the bar, uh, and saw a group of people sitting by one of the benches and drinking Miller Lite out of a can, out of a cooler at their feet. And she approached them and said, you know, uh, you really, you really can't do that in Sagittarius. And they informed her that, oh, no, 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 you don't understand. Sagittarius has a social district, you can drink on the streets anywhere in town. Obviously somewhat of a lack of communication, uh, certainly receiving communication. Uh, uh, another, a second learning of my own. I spent 30 years in advertising, I know a few things about, a few things, only a few things. One of those is signs. I know a lot about signs. Um, the signs that are in place for the social district look like they're an advertisement for the fact that there is a social district and it's outlined on the map. Those signs are at the perimeter of the district. Those signs, like the signs outside virtually every bar in town, should say, as they do in those bars, no alcohol beyond this point. Otherwise, you're going to have a social district that really does extend all the way to the ends of the city limits. Anyway, just trying to help out with a couple of potential learnings. That's it.
Okay, all right, Dan, thanks for your comments. Uh, any other comments from the public this evening? If none, we will, uh, continue. Uh, there are no communications, uh, planned this evening, none presented to us. Uh, next, uh, agenda item, reports from boards, commissions, or other committees. Any, any board reports out there from council? None this evening? Okay, I do have a Cal, uh, Council of Lake Shore and Water Authority report to give as we met, uh, this morning. Uh, we had a board meeting this morning. Our, our first agenda item, uh, was election of officers. Uh, we approve officers, uh, every year at the start of our fiscal year budget, which starts March 1st of every year. Pleased to, uh, report that, uh, the new chair at Cal Lake, uh, is Barry Johnson in the City of Sagittarius. The, uh, vice chair is Dan Erkhart from City of Douglas. And our secretary of treasure is Mike McQuiggin from Sagittarius Township. Daryl informed, uh, our manager informed the board that he has been meeting, uh, I believe as our city manager has also with, uh, MDOT regarding pre-construction meetings uh, regarding the, uh, Iowa 96 project. Interesting enough, uh, his meeting was providing MDOT with water for a temporary con, concrete plant. Uh, it'll be somewhere along I-96. He wasn't quite sure how he's going to do that, but he's working with MDOT on providing, uh, MDOT water for, uh, concrete and to service other vehicles. A heads up, and this will be in the paper and posted in, uh, various communities, websites, et cetera. The semi-annual hydrant flushing program is going to take place, uh, the week of April 26th with a backup of May 3rd. So, uh, that is, uh, in, in semi-annual process to, uh, keep our system functioning and make sure our fire hydrants are, uh, operating, uh, correctly, et cetera. Uh, and then we also had our, uh, review of our annual review, performance review of the, uh, Daryl Van Dyke, the manager of Cal Lake Shore and Water. It came out, uh, extremely high marks. We utilize a system very similar to what Sagittarius has used in the past for city manager evaluations. And, uh, 10, 10 per, 10 specific items, uh, performance items, uh, maximum points, five for excellent. So out of 50 potential, uh, points, Daryl earned 45 when you look cumulative, cumulatively across the board, uh, which is a, uh, which is close to, you know, which we would consider excellent performance. And, uh, so, uh, that, that went off pretty well. And that's it from Cal Lake. Any other committee? Any other committee reports? Okay, comments by council this evening? Does one councilman have a comment? He'd like to share. Okay, Scott?
A constituent contacted me asking if we had extinguished the star on Mount Bald Head. Did that switch get flipped?
I can respond to that. Yes, it did.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. And finally, the city manager was very safe during his tour of the Kalamazoo River. He was wearing a wet suit. He was wearing a life jacket and he had a signaling device. The only thing he neglected to, to wear was sunscreen. But I, but frankly, I think I have a worse sunburn than he does because he's got more hair than I do.
Councilman Dean, if I could just add on real quick, I mean, all joking aside, it was a beautiful tour. We went down the, down the Kalamazoo through Oxbow Lake. And then we portaged our paddle boards over a sand dune, then went into Lake Michigan and then back into the Kalamazoo River where we met strong currents and a headwind. But it was a beautiful tour and I learned a lot. Especially neat was the, the old channel in Oxbow Lake with all the, the pilings and the piers, so. I really, really appreciated that and I got a good workout. So thank you, Councilman Dean.
Well, you're, you're new here. Why, why did you get your feet wet? So you're welcome.
That's a, that's a long trek. And coming up the Kalamazoo River is always a challenge with the, the, the strong currents. Regardless of what type of vessel you're operating, either man-driven or or even with the power boats, it can be challenging at times. So any other comment by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Lauren?
Um, I just wanted to update you on what I've learned about the social district. I had an opportunity to talk with Stephen Phelps from the Butler and he told me that things went very well with everything they're doing with the social district with the cups. He had a number of the new Alleghen County deputies stop in, chatted with him about it and actually chatted with Emily about it. And from what I understand, they told me things went well for them, so they were happy about it, so. And as you heard Lieutenant Enfield say, we didn't have a lot of issues over St. Patrick's Day, so. I noticed a lot of people around town and it looked like it was a great time, so that's all. And by the way, Michigan is down by one, I believe.
Quiet, 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 quiet. Enough of that. It's not like my wife ruining it. I'm taping that dumb thing.
Very quick.
Yes.
This is Chris and follow-up to council member Dean. Scott contacted me last week to see if we could turn the light off and I said it's after St. Patrick's Day we could. And Nick said they would be taking the other Christmas lights down the end of this week or the start of next.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor, this is Garn. I just wanted to kind of reiterate the thanks for the fire chief in his very, his volunteer spirit outside of his regular day job. I was, I went over to Wayland for my second vaccination on Saturday and there was the chief and his wife, and I believe that he was there all day long. And he was just kind of making sure everybody was good to go and visiting with folks and it was really, really great to see him, but I just always marvel at the fact that this guy's just about everywhere right now, which is really good. So much appreciated.
Any other comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Support? Someone? Lauren, okay, thanks. Okay, the motion by Louis, support by Stanton to adjourn the meeting with the clerk, please call a roll.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, and go blue.
Peterson?
Yeah.
And Beckett?
Yes. For everybody.
Sorry, Mark.